Welcome to day two of the budget hearing. Please stand for the pledge. Roll call for attendance, please.
Councilwoman Resnetti present. Councilwoman Riley is present. Councilmember Friedman is absent. Councilman Burns is absent. Councilman Strawn.
Present.
Councilman Scanlon.
Present.
And President Scrungey.
Present.
All right, let's get right into it with Terry. Who's me with the over the assessment valuation? Welcome. So it's open, please open page one twenty-three to thirteen through two sixteen.
Sorry about that. Ratios. And for twenty twenty-four, the home set will be based on fifty-one point nine zero zero zero. And non-home setting be based on forty-eight point one zero zero zero. We have to stay within five percent of the previous year. And we use the proportionate population. That I work at this stage. Any questions on that?
Proceed please, twenty-three, please.
Okay, this is my overall budget, basically my budget. They level. For the whole budget. I'm now working with a full-time clerk and myself. Without any better position, we run the office that way. So because of the additional things that I would have my assistants basically do on my behalf and I'm not there and then her title changed. Change because of required responsibility that to run our office. That's price for other than that.
Question on page twenty-three? All right, let's move to page two thirteen through sixteen.
Okay, the first page two fourteen is basically the current pilots and their estimated payment amount. I did go over this with O M B at the county level to make sure those payments were exacted that they know. Who oversees the pilot payment? Any questions on that? And page two fifteen is spreadsheet layout for the exemption for the city of Binghamton. And what exemptions we do have and how many exemptions per exemption? And then two sixteen is the pie chart. It's giving you a little bit better visual of how things are divided in the pie. If you look better perspective, how the exemptions can impact the total tax or value of the any question?
Yes. Open another row.
Testing, testing. Okay, thank you for that. Chair, how are you doing?
Great.
Good, good, good. So I want to kind of go back because we moved too quickly on page twenty-three. There was a change. There was a significant reduction in terms of the placement. Give me one second, I'll tell you. And professional services. We have a commercial consultant now, one at a rate of six thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. Is that new for this year? I can't recall.
Broke it out. See, when we did the adjustments, we did get rid of a part-time employee. It's not going to be budgeted in this year.
Right.
And we took some of that in the funds initially with the commercial consultant and merged it with the increase in the salary.
Got it. So this commercial consultant is that our our, I don't want to say beck and call, but we can utilize their services to accommodate what we're missing from that full-time employee.
Well, it's it's a kind of a basically my, if I need more expertise on a commercial property.
Okay.
I've been, I didn't have to use a consultant last year, but sometimes we get in these unique cases, you know, where we'll need consulting to help make some decisions.
Okay, so these are higher level experts to expand our capability.
Yes, they're usually certified. Commercial.
Okay.
But we always want to keep a fund available. So if we need the consultation, we have it available.
Okay, and so, but again, we would not have had a full-time employee under professional services last year. So what is the change that we're seeing? What shifted?
We Yeah, we had, I think, sixteen thousand for professional consultant. Yeah, it was the drone. We were looking at doing aerial photography.
Okay.
And we decided not to do it.
Okay, which is why we've only spent two hundred and eighty-five dollars this year.
Yes.
And that's why we would see almost six thousand five hundred in an increase for next year, but compared to what we requested in encumbered. It's a, you see why it's such a variance and it's
My overall budget has slightly
Decreased overall.
Decreased overall.
Okay, awesome. And then for those who may be watching out in public, some of the exemption we have, for example, for our residents that are over sixty-five, there are three different lines at three different rates. Can you shed a little light on what the differences are?
The differences on if they get city and county exemption for low-income seniors? Or is it just city, school and county? So it's a breakdown of the amount of their income. We get different percentages.
Okay.
And some of the percentages, they don't qualify for certain.
Certain deductions.
Yeah.
So the the largest subset where we see four hundred and forty-one parcels, that's, those are our income-eligible seniors in our city?
Yes, that are low income. Under three thirty-one thousand.
Okay. And then where we where we see two, those are our higher-earning seniors? Is that what we're true assume? Okay. But that doesn't reflect the total number of residents. Those are seniors that own parcels.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just, the exemptions are based on parcels and what exemptions are applied to each parcel.
And if they own two parcels, they would
Get it on.
On one. Okay, thank you for clarifying. That concludes my question.
Fifteen with the graph, with the circle chart, with the pie chart. Circle chart. Sir Chairman, if there's no other questions or just go ahead, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Thirty-five percent of the city is tax-exempt.
That is correct.
So how does that compare? Have you ever compared to look at other cities our size? Is that comparable in line or, you know?
In my experience with other cities, comparable to a certain extent, a lot of the cities, thirty-seven percent, thirty-five, it could be up to forty depending on the type of area. I know my experience in Monroe County, some areas were higher because they had U of R, they had universities. It just depends on the demographic of what we have in the city. The extent of what they've done.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Councilman Scanlon. If you take Albany, that's probably above fifty percent because of all the colleges, the state universities up there as well as all the state offices.
All right, thank you. Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, what about other upstate municipalities more similar to us like Utica? Maybe Almira, maybe something like that?
I cannot honestly tell you because they have their own but it didn't seem totally out of line. But the fact is when new exemptions are offered and things to us and it's when people qualify like it's incoming, we qualify for senior low income. If we increase that income, more people will qualify, which will knock down our
Right.
Because what they don't have the other residents.
It's absorbed on the other end. Yeah. Yeah. Right. And that's state. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions?
You want us to put together something, we could probably do too much more.
Yeah, all the dumping impact reports are being done before other ones. I think we have to consider Almira. I know there's I can think of maybe some other cities. Okay.
Yeah, no, I honestly, I would be very interested in seeing that because I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of stereotypes that go back and forth about, you know, because I mean, I just, I look, I was talking to Councilman Strawn about this page when we got to two sixteen earlier. And very bluntly, we looked at each other and the first thing that we said to each other was, you know, technically speaking, with sixty-four point nine percent by the numbers, less than two-thirds, slightly less than two-thirds of this city is taxable. Like that seems kind of extreme to me, but it may be in line with other municipalities that are similar. So it doesn't necessarily have to be a P one, but I'd love to see something like that.
Yeah, I can get there.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to move pages one twenty-three and two thirteen through two sixteen forward.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Terry.
So let's welcome Sarah Glass and open page seventy-eight, seventy-nine. Welcome, Sarah. Tell us what's significantly changed in your budget, please.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me.
Hey, sir.
The biggest change you're going to see is that we have requested to add a new line under personal services. It's an economic development specialist, business development. It's one position listed at fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars. The reason that we're requesting this is that right now, we are able to offer a high level of service to those businesses, property owners, out-of-town folks who are interested in in business in the city of Binghamton, but really only as they come to us. So when we get inquiries in, whether it's through the cold calls, referrals, the networks that we've built, we're able to really efficiently and effectively respond to those people that are coming to us and needing things. But the area where we are not necessarily resourced is in being proactive and actually reaching out to other businesses and developments. And specifically as it relates to getting new businesses to come to the city of Binghamton. And of course, we are all focused on major job creators and large-scale industry. But what a lot of cities of our size, I know Ithaca is one that does this. They actually go out to other communities. They talk to businesses that are successful in other communities and they ask. In some cases, they try to poach, but in many cases, try to encourage other businesses to locate another branch here or otherwise expand to the city of Binghamton. I think we've built a really strong momentum in our downtown as we've seen from the number of restaurants that have opened and are opening. And what we really want to do now is fill those vacant storefronts with businesses that are complementary to those uses. So people that are coming down for food and beverage, they may also be interested in other recreational or shopping activities that we don't necessarily have a lot of in our downtown right now or in our commercial districts. So that's the primary function of this role. This function, this role would also function to take some of the work off of the plates of the three employees that are in this office right now. Historically, if you look over the last fifteen years, this office has had significantly more staff. So we're trying to do as much as we can with fewer resources than we've had in the past. So really asking for this to try to get us right-sized so that the existing staff we have are not being overly burdened and, and, you know, moving towards burnout, but also in order to add our capacity in the outreach that we want to be doing to different businesses. I know it's a significant expense, so I'm happy to stop there and take questions before we move on to the rest of the budget.
You chair Scanlon, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. So you did mention that in years prior, the the office itself was a little bit larger. Do you have any number so that everyone is aware of what the office used to look like and how long ago?
Yeah, I can look those up. I know at some point it had a staff of seven or eight.
Are you kidding?
I am not. So and that was, that was a number of years ago. I mean, that's, that's looking more like ten, twelve years ago at this point, although I can get the exact numbers. And really what we saw was that during the pandemic, really everyone was just trying to keep their heads above water, right? So a lot of what this office did was just COVID response and recovery. We weren't necessarily doing as much of the building that we're trying to do right now. And so we'll talk about this with the larger budget. We did see the budget in this office go down significantly during that period. This is really just an effort to try to build us back up to a capacity that makes sense for a city of our size and enables us to do the work that, you know, we're being asked to do both by our business community here and also that will help us capitalize on some of the interests that we've seen in our community in the last few years. And the new energy New York money that's coming into the university in Endicott and how Binghamton's positioning itself as a supply chain partner there, as well as the Micron investments in Syracuse, we know that Binghamton will likely become a place that people who work at Micron live and and build their lives. So we want to be prepared for that and making sure that we're not missing opportunities that are coming our way.
Perfect. And then my second question, as I asked, with any new position that's typically brought to council, wasn't a market analysis done? So we are looking at comparative data from Utica's and not necessarily, I mean, well, anywhere else that is similar in terms of our infrastructure, our revenue, our taxation for a position as such?
In terms of having the position itself or in terms of the salary?
Both.
So I didn't do any particular written analysis, but I do know in speaking to other organizations that they are significantly better staffed than us. I know Syracuse, which is obviously a much larger size than us, but they have twenty. So even if we divide Syracuse by four, that's still two more people than we currently have. And so I think it's, it's an appropriate staffing level. Also, quite frankly, having three people in an office is difficult. It's difficult to coordinate having enough people to staff offices and we have meetings, people are taking vacations. We're very fortunate that we work in a very collaborative city hall where the planning department and the mayor's office specifically support us during those periods. But we would like to allow those offices to have their full staff and not necessarily be relying on them for coverage. So it also just helps us have more people physically in the office who are able to respond to resident constituent needs that come in.
And so this is more, it will have some administrative duties as well. So a large chunk of it is administrative as well as some outreach and what have you.
Right. I wouldn't say a large chunk of administrative. I would say a small portion is administrative. We share administrative duties across my office because we do not have an administrative assistant or any sort of clerical staff in the economic development office.
Okay, and then finally, what I, my other part of the first question was in terms of the analysis. Do you see this salary ranking with others in, I know you didn't do a full
Yes.
You know, search. But as you know, we have positions that we think are going to be highly sought and then they sit on our board forever. Do you think this is at the right price for what is being, I mean, at the right price, the right salary? Sorry. Yes. I don't think it might. Yes. That's what I was saying, but your mic is not on.
Is this salary sufficiently competitive, in your opinion, to get the skill set for the proactiveness that is needed? It makes sense to try to get people. I get the logic. I'm not arguing that. I'm just from the salary perspective.
Yes, so we talked about the salary a lot and the development of this position, and there's really a couple of ways you can do this. You can start at this, which would I would consider a lower end for a position of this size. And then you know that what you're going to be looking for is people who are a little bit fresher, that you're going to have to build a little bit more capacity in-house. You're going to have to be more of a hands-on management, and that's something that I am comfortable doing. And that was kind of the trade-off we made was, we don't necessarily think we're going to be stealing the the people who are doing this in other communities who maybe have ten, fifteen years of experience. But we're hoping to get someone early on in their career who's excited about this work and who's willing to kind of take on some new challenges and I'm certainly willing to take on the management responsibilities that would come with developing someone coming in earlier on in their career. One thing I forgot to mention is that this position will require nights and weekends, not a significant amount of nights and weekends, but to the extent that we have events that happen off-hours that support economic development, our businesses are often open hours that aren't traditionally nine to five. And so that was something we considered as well is that, you know, if we're bringing someone in, this is designed to be, I wouldn't say entry level, but early career opportunity, that that may be more appropriate for a position that requires those funky hours from time to time.
That concludes my question in with Councilman Scrungey as well. So thank you.
And I, I don't, there's not any huge changes through the rest of it. There's slight tweaks. So the, I think the other biggest increases in our twenty twenty-four proposed budget for promotions and marketing. And you'll see that through September seventh, we didn't, we didn't incur even all of what was budgeted for last year, but that is because most of our events are happening towards the end of this year. So the Italian, the tournament of bands and Italian festival that is held Monday, that's a couple of thousand dollars. We have our tree lighting coming up. That's a couple of thousand dollars. So even though you see that that encumbered or expended is not super high at this point in the year, that's because a lot of our expenses come later in the year. And we've asked for some additional money here just because we get so many requests to support so many great things that are happening in our community. We have a lot of businesses that are starting to band together who want to be doing events and want to be collaborating on different things that are happening in the city. And even though it's not that much money when we're looking at, you know, two hundred dollars here, helping them print some posters there. Those things go a long way towards demonstrating that we support those businesses and those other economic development, placemaking, quality of life drivers. So it's a small amount of money in terms of the total budget, but the impact that it has, it really helps us demonstrate to the community that we're committed to supporting them even in those very small dollar ways.
Mr. Chairman. Sarah, forgive, you're talking about next Monday, right?
Yes.
Columbus Day, right?
Yes.
Okay. I got confused, okay.
Yeah, the Columbus Day, Italian Festival and Tournament of Bands, I think is its full and expansive name.
Yeah, no, it totally is. I just want to make sure Columbus Day was in there.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Chair, I move that we move pages seventeen, seventy-eight and seventy-nine forward for economic development.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Let's welcome Bernice to talk about purchasing. Open page twenty-two, forty-two and forty-three. Bernice, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Tell us about some different changes in your budget, please.
So the first is for purchasing. This is pretty much staying the same, other than an additional twenty-five dollars that's required for the membership. Central services. The overall budget has increased. Personnel services overtime has gone down. There has been increases to the internet, professional services and the postage are the most significant ones.
Why don't you finish up with forty-three? You did both right now?
What's that?
Did you go over page forty-three also?
Yep.
Okay, so questions on page forty-two or forty-three? I'll take a motion to accept the pages.
We get twenty-two as well?
She did twenty-three.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, motion to approve pages twenty-two, forty-two and forty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone oppose? Bernice, that was quick, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Bernice. Bernice is a rock star.
All right, please open page twenty-nine and we'll talk to Kendrick. Well, civil servant.
Good evening. I have absolutely no changes, no changes to my budget, other than the contractual salaries for the staff and so good job last year.
Right. Well, that's a, makes it simple, right?
Simple's good. We'll take simple.
Councilmember Riley, you have a question? I'm not sure what question you would have, but go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, motion to move page twenty-nine forward. Oh, I, oh, I'm so sorry.
Chair, I move that we move page twenty-nine forward.
With the pride of Councilwoman Riley and her eyes, it would be my honor to second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Thank you, Ken. That was easy.
You're welcome.
Yeah, good job, Chuck. Thank you. Let's open page sixty-eight, ninety-nine, one hundred.
That was the quickest section. I think he said a new record. Well done, Chairman.
That was good. Moving on. Moving on.
Yeah.
Welcome, Chris.
Good evening.
Tell us what's changing in your budget significantly, please.
Two, two changes for this year. We have a vacant electrical inspector position that we would like to eliminate. And we would like to add a building inspector position in place of the electrical inspector.
What page are we on, Chris?
Ninety-nine.
Questions or comments? And then help them over personally, please.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Just, sorry, I missed what you said. What was the title and the difference between the work responsibility?
The titles were electrical inspector and building inspector. We've historically had three inspectors in the building and construction department. A building inspector, an electrical inspector and a plumbing inspector. We're looking to eliminate the title of electrical inspector and change that to building inspector. We can't just do a title change. We need to actually eliminate one position and add new position title.
Until this person gets able to meet all the responsibilities of a new title?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be identical to the electrical inspector responsibilities. This would actually be broadened. The building inspector has more expanded responsibilities than somebody who's confined to just one trade.
Other questions on that? Yeah. Help them over birds.
Hi, Chris. So the the electrical is still going to be inspected.
Absolutely, yeah. Yep.
Thank you.
Councilmember Riley.
Thank you, Chairman Scanlon. So how are you, Chris?
Great.
Good, good, good. I know our council members may not have been privy to some of the in-depth discussions we talked about surrounding this restructure. surrounding this restructuring, but can you give them a little more of the depth as to why? And how it will, we can lean on the other service, the, the people. Remember we talked about?
Yeah.
Okay, so they don't know that, but can you give a little more background?
So when the electrical inspector uh, had, had resigned. We posted that position in May of this year, so that was about five months ago. We've not had one application for that position since then. Um, in the meantime, we really can't function with just one or two inspectors in that department. Uh, so eliminating that position is only possible because we have what we call third-party electrical inspectors in the city of Binghamton. There's two companies, Commonwealth and Atlantic Inland, who provide electrical inspections for construction projects or home improvements. They are master electricians who will inspect and certify that the work was done in accordance with the National Electric Code. With those services already in place, it's redundant to keep an electrical inspector on staff when that individual uh, A is not available and uh, B is performing redundant services. They're already being made available through the third-party inspectors. We really don't need to use our resources to, to hire someone to do just that. In the meantime, hiring a building inspector would include many more tasks and responsibilities than somebody who's only responsible for one trade. And would bring the the level of staffing for that department up to three. We're confident that we would have applicants for the building inspector position. In fact, we had a couple of good applicants that um, that were showing interest uh, when we hired a current building inspector. We're a little bit disappointed that we couldn't hire them all, but I think uh, that just proves that there's people out there who are looking for that, a position in that, that job title.
Chair.
Thanks, Chris. Uh, I think a related question, the, the changes that we made before, were they, they well received? Did they go as planned as best as when you presented to us?
Yeah, yeah, they did. Uh, and, and unfortunately, despite the fact that there was a salary increase for, for uh, you know, all the positions in the department, the increase for the electrical inspector wasn't sufficient to keep them on board.
And the two, there are two different lines of code inspectors. Are those the positions? Are we adding back any of the ones that we took out?
No, they're, the reason that we see them split up with uh, three uh, positions under the fifty-one hundred line and three under the F uh, fifteen is they're just this, the resourcing for those, the funding for those is from two different sources. One is from personal services, the other one is from uh, ARPA funding. We, we've just moved some of those under an uh, ARPA funding category.
Okay.
Clear. Are we adding back the two positions we eliminated from code?
No, so that's the second change that I said we had two changes to the budget. That's all right. I just wanted to go through them one at a time so we don't get get confused. So that was the first change, eliminating that title of electrical inspector, replacing it with a second building inspector. Bringing the staffing for the building construction department back up to three. Uh, the second change is um, bringing the vacant property officer out from under direction of the planning department. Bringing him over to uh, the code enforcement department. Adding some additional responsibilities as a supervisor for the housing code inspectors. And uh, can, kind of merging those two positions together to create the uh, code supervisor, uh, vacant property officer. That will be a wholly new position, not to the city, but to the code enforcement department.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak first here, um. I recall when you came down, Chris, before we talked about, and it was a, the council, I think, was pretty much unanimous. We were talking about re installing positions at, at budget time, the code, the code inspectors. Um, I'm, I'm not crazy about this, right? Everybody remember this? Because we talked about it and I, I'm, I'm not sure why they're not here now. I mean, because that would I hear what the changes you want to make and understanding the change you want to make, but I, I, I was assuming these two code inspectors are going to be back in the budget.
I mean, this is born out of that discussion. We, we are trying to um, provide productivity increases that were sought after. I think what we, what we concluded is that um, the shortcomings for the housing code inspectors isn't having enough people to make enough observations, but rather it's, it's uh, being able to process the data, doing the data entry, providing proper notification, prosecution in court. Uh, those things have become so complex that uh, they need, they need direct supervision, constant supervision guidance to facilitate keeping up with the changes and the complexities in those positions. I mean, we really uh, the incumbent inspectors really can make dozens of observations of code violations every day. That's not a problem for them to increase the quantity of code deficiencies that they see. The bottleneck in the department is the complexity of doing the data entry and the administrative tasks. They're evolving quickly, they're changing, the way that we uh, process, the way that we uh, serve for court appearances, the way that we provide proper notification and due process has become so incredibly complex. The bottleneck is now in the administrative tasks and the changes are so fast and so um, cumbersome that we really need somebody that provides constant direct supervision, answers questions all day long on a daily basis. Somebody who can manage the data and analyze the data that's coming in and make sure that the six inspectors that we do have are, are operating at full capacity. We don't have the ability to provide that supervision right now. So this data, this uh, vacant property officer slash code supervisor would be the, the eight hours a day, five days a week. Supervisor, troubleshooter, uh, providing, you know, technical interpretation of different things that come out of the legal system and the way that we do the work. Who would unclog that bottleneck to make the productivity of the six inspectors that we have increased in their capacity.
Chris, so I don't understand how, so walk me through the process. So one of your code inspectors goes down whatever street in the city, sees a violation.
Yeah.
Sees four or five during the day, whatever, and he comes back and now he's got to, he's got to put his data into a computer in City Hall.
Yeah. That's right. Yep.
Um, I don't, I, I mean, I don't know where to start there. I think um, I'm not telling you how to run your department. I wouldn't do that because it's your department, but it seems to me there's got to be a better way. Whether it's an administrative person in the office, that's all they do, where it's, the, the information is on a, on a laptop, iPad that's transformed to the office and they write it up then, so the code inspectors can keep writing up. I don't, um, I'll open it, but counsel, please, uh, yeah, go ahead, counsel, councilman, uh.
Serious. So we eliminated two positions earlier in the year.
Right.
And so now we're looking to fill these other positions. I, I'm just wondering. I mean, these are folks who are like on the ground, right? Going out there, seeing what's going on, right? Which is a pretty important piece. And this is what it sounded like. We pretty much need more of all times. So I guess I'm wondering, will these new positions take on their responsibility, take on their work, get that done? And then some, like, I don't, like, I'm and why didn't we think about this few months ago? Like, I, I, this did never came up as something that as a potential need.
I, I, you know, the reason, the, the reason that we do it in stages is because I think it's, it's an overwhelming request to come in in the middle of a budget and say, we're going to eliminate two positions, provide raises for nine different positions, add another position here, eliminate another one there, add another one over here. It, that, that's a lot to digest. It's a lot to, to put together and the, and the chances of, of, of that being comprehensive and palatable is, is pretty unlikely. I think that as the, the changes come into the department, as we see how things are working, we can pivot, make changes where we feel they're necessary. I think it would be a little premature to have made all these changes at the same time when I initially came in. But this is, this is in direct response to the concerns about the productivity level that we may have been losing by eliminating two positions. I'm still of the mindset that if you created more entry-level positions without oversight and without management, then you're really not going to get the, the productivity that you're seeking. It sounds great. Just more sounds better, but more unsupervised, unskilled, unsure, untrained. Doesn't really end up with more prosecution, more compliance, improved conditions. Now you just have more people just still stuck in the same bottleneck. This is streamlining the process so that we can provide the best service that we can for the city.
I guess, but we're not adding more at this level, like the folks out there doing the code inspections. We're adding. I, I'm just trying to, to fully understand it.
Yeah, you're, you're.
I, thank you for trying to.
We're, we're adding, we're adding a, a supervisory position to make sure that the resources that we have are, are functioning at full capacity. That they're not getting stuck on questions. They're not getting hung up on complexities. We've had an incredible amount of changes coming out of the sixth judicial district this year. The requirements put upon the city for proper notification and then the requirements for serving people for court appearance tickets. It has grown exponentially and become incredibly complicated. That there's no, there's no way of making sure that it's being done right on every single occasion. And when court cases get dismissed after somebody puts eight or ten hours of work into it, that's a lot of code violations that went unobserved because somebody was in the office trying to process the paperwork, provide discovery for our attorneys so that they can prosecute. Make sure that everything is, is, all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. It's just to have it dismissed in the end because they missed something. And if they had the supervision, if they could ask questions and get answers and have technical interpretation, that would have been a successful case. Still time lost because we're not on the street, but to lose all that time and then just have it dismissed anyway? That, that seems like that the problem isn't with their ability to observe. It, it's not that they didn't go out and respond to a complaint and see the observation. Providing due process.
All these issues.
I'm sorry?
You feel like this would eliminate?
No, I'm going to be back again asking for different things at some point, but we're going to do this for now and we're going to see how that goes and then we're going to move forward and, and we're going to keep trying. That's, that's, I don't ever foresee a time when I can say, I've structured this so perfectly, it'll, it'll just drive itself. And it'll never be a problem ever again. We're always going to have challenges. We're always going to have changes and we're just going to keep pivoting and evolving and trying harder, learning, doing more, trying to make it better.
Councilmember Skorinji.
Right. Thanks for coming down. Appreciate it. So um, when I get in the scenarios like this, right? I, I follow the principle of logical rational thought, follow the bouncing ball. So if increased mandates and requirements in the sixth judicial district are taking code inspectors proportionally in terms of their time over the course of a workday. Off the streets more and in the office more to ensure that compliance. How does your proposal decrease that bottleneck?
Good question. Think of it like this, if we have six autonomous people all out there trying to learn the new processes.
Right.
And none of them fully grasp it enough to explain it to each other. But they get it well enough to do the case in question.
Right.
They do that and it takes them six or eight hours to sort through the processes and procedures and they get it done.
Right.
But then the next day, the next inspector has the same problem and they're doing six or eight hours right on down the line. Six times six, six times eight, thirty-six, forty-eight hours wasted trying to figure this out. What if instead one supervisor went to corporation council, hammered out a very systematic plan for how to handle these things and was available to every inspector to explain it in a very concise, clear way that it could be accomplished in two hours. It, it seems like we've wasted more time having each code inspector out there on their own. Like a basketball team with no coach, fumbling around, not knowing where to go or what to do when one supervisor, one coach could have seen the big picture and presented it in a very clear and concise way and directed each person when they've gone astray a little bit to bring it back to center court.
Right. So then it would seem to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, it would seem to me that you're suggesting centralizing that knowledge gap makes things more efficient.
Yeah.
In part, at least.
Well, certainly, centralizing the knowledge gap and assigning that task to somebody who, in my opinion, has uh, more capabilities of receiving the data and simplifying it for others.
So I, I don't, I don't disagree with you at all about the centralization aspect with respect to the knowledge gap. So can you explain for us in a practical way, in effect, in reality? Right? So it would seem to me, the bottleneck at the end of the day is a code inspector has to do more administrative work because of new mandates and compliance issues that takes them away from, as you said earlier, quote, that's a lot of code observations going unobserved. End quote. So it would seem to me that in this particular situation, the definition of more code observations going observed correctly is more man-hours observing code issues. Now that might mean, in theory, more men and women or the men and women that you already have doing proportionally more of those hours. So my question is, with this framework that you're proposing, which one of those two things does it bring to the table?
This, this is taking the men and women that we currently have and giving them, increasing their capacity to spend more time out in the field, making code observations.
Okay.
Than they are sitting at their desk trying to find their way through the maze of, of procedures and processes. Because I don't expect that the changes that we've seen are the last changes we'll ever see.
Okay, so can I offer a practical hypothetical? So Councilman Burns is the new supervisor. And we have Councilman Strawn here, who's the best code inspector that we have. And Giovanni Skorinji at one eighty-nine Matthew Street is the worst property owner in the city of Binghamton. Councilman Strawn cites me for ten-inch grass. He comes back at the end of the day. Under this new model, is Councilman Strawn inputting that data? Or is he giving it to the new supervisor and the new supervisor is inputting that data?
It's, it's a good question. Councilman Strawn is inputting that data. But when changes are made to the way the data is entered, because there's changes in the software.
Right.
Councilman Burns explains to him very clearly and concisely how to navigate those changes.
Yeah.
And if you still fail to comply with the code and this resulted in you needing to be served with a criminal summons to appear in court. It's Councilman Burns that will make sure that Councilman Strawn.
Right.
Give you proper notification as required by law.
Right.
Prepared the documents in a way that were prosecutable and defined and concise. So that when we bring that in front of a judge, there's no questions about due process, proper notification, discovery.
Yeah.
And things that actually end up winning or losing many court cases these days. It's more and more common that court cases are not based purely on the merit of the charges brought against the defendant, but on some technical issue that went wrong along the way.
That, that, that makes total sense, but looking at this from the thirty thousand foot level. If he's still inputting the data, even if his knowledge gap is increased. His actual man-hours back on the street are nominal at best, right? Like if he was inputting the data. That's, I, I get it.
Yeah.
But like and in particular, when you consider the lagged effect of, as it relates to hypothetically, a code inspector. Um, an additional code inspector. Um, an additional code inspector. Job posting certifications, training, in-office administrative, out in the field, like. Kind of like how Chairman Scanlon stated, I I I'll read a really a a good point he made, like, Chris. You're a good guy. I'm I'm not going to tell you how to run your department. You're the professional here, not me. I just, I'm having trouble. Forget even understanding rationalizing. If more supervisors. Don't have some proportion of out in the field in their job requirement. How is this problem actually getting fixed? No theories, no hypotheticals, but in a practical, real way, right? You said, quote, that's a lot of code observations going unobserved, right? So it's clear practically, in effect.
Yeah.
The bottleneck is how many, not man, but man hours in the field, right? From a data perspective, more man hours could be more code inspectors. It could be the current code inspectors out in the field more. So my question is, using your word, how does this proposal break that bottleneck? Because I got to be honest with you, brother. I don't see it. I don't see it.
All right. So a cou- couple of things on that.
Can I take a stab at sort of answer? Because I. Chris has alluded to it. A lot of this this change has come from my department. So let me try to explain a little bit. Chris has mentioned data entry. I sort of want to take you to sort of at a very high level through the steps that have to be gone. So they get the complaint, they go out, they do the inspection, they document what they see. Maybe not on the first inspection, they don't document, but they write down what they did. They come back and do the data entry. At that point, that data entry generates a notice of violation. Notice of violation, but you can only generate the notice of violation if you also know the address.
Right.
Sometimes finding addresses of people and good mailing addresses is difficult.
Right.
The the particular person that they have in mind for the supervisor position is very good at finding those addresses and finding that data. So if I'm a code officer, I'm having a hard time finding Mr. Y. This supervisor may be able to assist in finding Mr. Y's address, save me time. The other thing is that once we get a notice of violation, it used to be a simple matter of dropping it in the mail and sending it to the last known address. That's no longer the case. Now we have to send it in the last known address, but we got to send it certified mail for it to be considered a good notice of violation. So that adds a process. Which the supervisor can make sure is being done correctly, because for our old code inspectors, it's a whole new process. And for our new code inspectors, it's new to them as well. So we're trying, I think we're in a real transition right now where they are. Adapting to a whole, almost a brand new process in many respects. Then they go back and do their re-inspect. Then they take photographs. Now you got to come back and enter those photographs in. Uh the supervisor happens to be very good at doing that. And then you have to produce an accusatory and an affidavit of service. After they have a service, going back to your notice of violation, and then you have to accuse it, do accusatories. We used to be able to do one information that had. You violated section, this, this, section, this, this, this. Now the court wants us to inter- and and. And I understand the legal basis, so don't take this as a criticism of the court. They want us to do this charge, this facts. So now we're instead of having one information, perhaps you do four or five informations to cite the same. Same number of violations you have would have cited previously.
Yeah.
So that results in five different charges. Then you cannot serve that accusatory. Via criminal summons anymore, or if you do do a criminal summons, you still have to personally serve it. So criminal service requires personal service. This supervisor can facilitate the personal service, because that will have to be an outside process server. We're actually looking at retaining some of the due process server for people outside the county of Broome. Which is something this supervisor can do so that's not in the code enforcement officer's hand to try to get the process server. Then if you get it filed, then you have to do your court documents for automatic disclosure. And so while I understand your basic premise that having more people doing this will make it easier. I think we need to work the process out and also there is room to gain efficiencies with our older officers and our newer officers. By having someone who can train them in how to do this on a regular basis and sort of walk them through this process over and over again. We try to refine the process that we're we're adjusting to.
Brian, I I get that. I get that and that totally makes sense and and I appreciate the details, but like. With all due respect, the more steps that get added to the process, right? At the expense of being blunt, you're proving my point. Because it's not solely a knowledge gap issue. It's a manpower issue, right? It's not, it's not that from my vantage point. I'm speaking only for myself here. I'm not saying that the proposed changes, Chris, to your department are bad. Or wrong. I'm not. I'm concerned about insufficiency. That's what I'm concerned about.
I believe what Mr. Schleider was saying, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, is that right now we are adjusting to a sort of a new world. And we want to make sure we have a process that works before we simply. Change maybe one factor at a time before we get to the point where we add more people.
Right.
Make sure that we're working efficiently with what we have before we start adding. Because I believe you was are saying that he probably, he might be coming back down later at some point. For the, to address what your issue is, but.
Yeah.
For right now, we're just trying to get the system to work, period.
It makes total sense, makes total sense. I I I.
I'm sorry, Chris, I didn't mean to take you.
No, that's that's fine. I appreciate your help, Ryan. No, I and and.
So, excuse me, Chris. So in the interest of starting the the work session on time.
Hmm.
Chris, you're going to have to come back on Wednesday, if you could, at five o'clock. Um and counsel, whatever questions you have, we can ask them then. We should start the work session on time, so I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Good evening. Thank you for joining the Binghamton City Council, day two of the fiscal year twenty twenty four. Proposed budget hearing agenda. We will continue moving forward. At this time, I will turn the chair over to. Sitting Finance Committee member, Councilman Strawn. Councilman Strawn, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would now like to open uh for our uh budget. Complete our day two budget uh hearing. Um the law and insurance fund portion of the budget. Those are pages twenty seven, twenty eight, two ten, two eleven, two twelve, two oh nine and two oh eight. Um corporate counsel, go ahead.
Turn it off again. I'm sorry. There is a, there's nothing really significant to report as terms of changes in my budget. Um, the only thing that I would sort of point your attention to is that the risk assistant line on the law section, which is page twenty seven. Is currently listed as vacant. Um, we did have a very successful candidate uh come in last week. And I made an offer last Friday. I was hoping to hear back from him today or tomorrow. I was hoping to do it for tonight, present it to you, but we haven't heard back, so that may be changing. So that's why I'd like to keep the funding there. Um, and then other than that, there have not been significant changes in our budget. On either pages twenty seven or twenty eight, are any. This is probably the chair's role, but are there any questions?
And yeah, any questions for corporate counsel on twenty pages twenty seven and twenty eight? Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to move forward pages twenty seven and twenty eight.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we're gonna, okay. So we can go to two ten, two eleven, two twelve, two oh nine. I guess we could reverse that, two oh eight, two oh nine, two ten, eleven and twelve.
If you don't mind, I'll start with two oh eight.
Yeah.
It's the pages, the insurance fund summary. This is interest that's earned on insurance recoveries, interfund revenues. This is not, this falls under my budget, but this is something more that's more chucked and it's just number generated by reports. Two oh nine deals with interest earnings, insurance recoveries again for vehicles that have been demolished, those types of things, interfund revenue transfers. Again, it's service, this is the pages that backs up two oh eight. Again, that's a function, while it fun falls under my purview, it's not. I don't control what goes into that. It's more of an issue of pages that do fall more into the control, the risk management side of the budget. Is page two ten. There are really no significant changes here. There have been some number changes to to reflect sort of current trends. And a provision for incurred loss and those type of things, but unless there's any questions, there's really no major changes on page two ten or two eleven.
Any further questions for corporate counsel on pages two oh eight through two eleven?
If before you move those, if there's two twelve is the workers' comp line, the workers' comp line deals with. It it's just, well, exactly what it says. I I will note that there does seem to be some positive trending. I know we've noticed a little bit of positive trend in our workers' comp claims. And we'll see whether it's persistent the next year or not, but good news for this year.
Also, one Riley, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Chair Strawn. So thank you again, guys. I'm not saying hello again.
Yeah.
Um, for legal services, is this based upon pending litigation? Why we see this increase?
This is the M two thousand nineteen on page two ten?
Yes.
Yes, yes. This is for litigation where. I can't control who sues us and sometimes that makes us, requires us to hire outside counsel. And so. This has been an, actually, the last two years have been kind of an extraordinary years. We have resolved some of those cases, which maybe there'll be a change, but there's still a number of outstanding things that will carry over in the next year. But it is something that we. If we could, we'd like to try to bring that number down.
Having it uh twice what was requested in the previous year, then. Ensures that you don't have to come back and request those.
We are trying to avoid that, yes.
Okay, and then just for, again, our own knowledge, the corp counsel has cars.
No, the vehicle repair is not for our car. We don't have cars, but we. Chuck established this a long time ago, and what it is, is when other departments' cars get damaged. And we sue or we file a claim, this is a line where those monies coming back, that money goes here. And it goes towards repair of other departments' vehicles. We have no cars. We all drive our personal vehicles.
Thank you for that clarification. Oh, and anecdotally.
Yes.
I know we talked about making sure your team has enough to buy new stamps for their notary.
Yes.
So.
We actually just removed some money over to our supply line, because we can do, I think, up to twenty five hundred dollars within our budget. So we've already, we've moved to to that.
And so this will include the new hires and and all of their supply needs as.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any additional questions on pages two oh eight through two twelve?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no additional, if there is no additional discussion, I'll make a motion to move pages two zero eight through two twelve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second on pages two eight through two twelve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, in the opinion of the chair, so Mr. President was saying, in the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. Those pages are moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Corp Counsel. Motion to adjourn.
Take a motion to adjourn the uh. Day two of the uh budget hearing.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
That's it. Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you all.